All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. All of the City Council present tonight, so we have a quorum. And if you will stand, the Sugar Land Composite Squadron of the U.S. Air Force Auxiliary Civil Air Patrol will post our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where are your arms?
Thank you. Ed, are you doing it? You got Stacy?
Um, why don't we have Bill?
Phil? You're gonna do Stacy? Are you doing Stacy?
I look puzzled.
This is no surprise. I want to take this opportunity. We, as you know, had a, our Communications Director, he retired back in the fall, and we began a process of finding someone to replace her. And as it turned out, that person, as we probably knew, was right amongst us. And anyway, that is Stacy Walker. We went through a process of evaluating, and we went through, or we interviewed several people. And just as I said, as we suspected, Stacy rose to the top and was our choice for Communications Director. And so, I want to introduce Stacy to whom you all probably know. Stacy. And Stacy came to us about three and a half years ago, as I recall. And anyway, we've got a Pulitzer Prize-winning writer who worked with the newspaper and was part of a group who was recognized among many other talents. So, we want to congratulate her and look forward to working closely with you and showing us the way. Thank you. Yeah, son.
Mayor, City Council, staff, friends, family. My mom's here tonight. Try not to cry.
Bring her up.
Come on, Mom.
Bring her up. Come on, Mom.
What an awesome surprise. So, this is why I'm pretty much great, is because of my mom. And this is all my family here. And I just want to thank you all and say that I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city. This has been a really great place for me to call home. And it's even more special because a lot of you all have become my friends. And I thank you for your support, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
I just wanted to say thanks to everyone for selecting my daughter for this position. And I know she would do a great job. Thank you.
I thought that was your sister. And we're glad to, we're glad to have your daughter. Before I get into the reason that most people are here, I know you all didn't just come just to see a City Council meeting, it's all of our restaurateurs that are here. I'm actually gonna read a proclamation first, out of order, so, 'cause I think it kind of fits with what we're doing tonight. But this proclamation says, "Whereas it's important that Americans have access to and consume healthful foods containing adequate vitamins, minerals, fiber, and other nutrients, even during challenging economic times. And whereas farmers and ranchers are unmatched in their ability to consistently produce an abundance of safe, nutritious, and affordable foods. And whereas producers confront significant uncertainties, including inclement weather, damaging insects, and other challenges on a daily basis. And whereas Fort Bend County farmers, ranchers, and others involved in the agricultural industry working together in an environmentally sustainable way help feed people here in Missouri City, our nation, and in other countries around the world." Now therefore, I'll, and I know, and on behalf of the City Council and all the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim February the 17th through the 23rd as Texas Food Connection Week in Missouri City. And I call upon all Americans to join me in recognizing and reflecting upon the strength of our diverse agricultural industry, and in celebrating the benefits of agriculture with appropriate observances and activities. And we have our own Charles Oberender, who's very involved in this organization. And Charles had another meeting tonight and could not be here, but wanted to, wanted us to recognize this event, and I thought it was very fitting with all these restaurateurs here. You couldn't do what you do without these farmers. All right. And it's great for us every six months to, to recognize all of our people in the community that own restaurants and serve our citizens with great food. And I've said this before, and I'll continue to say it, the people that are here tonight take that special effort to be the best of the best, and to score 95 or better on their food exams that they have. And that's not an easy chore for those of you that may not be familiar with restaurants, because it's not just a person who owns that restaurant, that manages that restaurant, it also involves the employees, who may not always think the same way the owner does, and to even, you know, to make sure that they're doing what they need to do. But we're very proud of the fact that this list just gets longer and longer. And you know what? I don't mind standing up here and reading them if it even gets longer than this, because for this many restaurants to say to our citizens that we take pride in what we do, we take pride in the food that we serve. And let me tell you, people, the residents of Missouri City know on our website where to find your food inspection report. And they look for that yellow piece of paper, as I do when I go in a restaurant, to see what your score is. And for you to score this high means that these people are gonna continue to come back to your restaurant, because they know that the quality of food, the quality of service, and the cleanliness of your restaurant makes you score what you do. So I encourage you to keep it up. Post it proudly on your doors, because again, over these past five or six years, our citizens have begun to look for that score. And, and again, I applaud you, and the City Council applaud you for that extra effort. So, let's get on with these guys, and remember that this is a criteria. Any restaurant that cooks and serves food and holds a valid health permit, and this excludes our convenience stores, grocery stores, school cafeterias, or any food establishment without a kitchen. The winning food establishment must score 95 or above with no critical violations. The health inspectors, y'all know this young lady, don't you? Are responsible for keeping track of the scores, and the restaurants with the best scores for the past six months routine inspection period receive this Clean Restaurant Award. So, again, many of these people, and I'm gonna say it, because we used to tell you how many times they were up here, and it got to be more than what I could name, so I'm gonna tell you those that are multiple winners, those are first winners, and so, Billy's Donuts. And I know that a lot of these people could not be here tonight, that's not any problem with us. A lot of them, like the donut places, get up before I even get up and go home. And, but just do this. When you're in their restaurant, walk up to them and say, "Thank you." Tell them, "Thank you for taking that extra effort to get this score," because it's not, it's not easy to do it. But Billy's Donuts, a multiple winner, they scored a 96. Blue Bonnet Grill, that's our own Blue Bonnet Grill, in the city center. And this is the first time that they've been judged, and for your information, they scored a 95. So eat at the Blue Bonnet Grill when you have a chance. Uh, and I don't think anybody's here. Well, come up here, Ken. Just standing back there, you know? Ken Lewis, our beverage manager. Guys, you think you got it tough? Own a restaurant that the city owns, that we're in every day. Yeah. And tell him what he's doing wrong. But anyway, congratulations, Ken. Brooklyn Pizzeria, 4717 Highway 6, scored a 95. It's their first time. Burger King, 10,0021 Highway 6, multiple winner, and they scored a 98 this go-round. Hey, all right. Here's another one of our first-time winners. Carl's Jr., 6231 Highway 6, and they scored a perfect 100. Corino's Italian Grill, multiple winner, 96. They're normally here. Catfish Willys, 2435 Texas Parkway, a 97, and they're a multiple winner. Chick-fil-A, goodness. I don't know how many times, I, I will say this, they won it every time we've ever done it, though, I know that. So, 95. Chili's, 5788 Highway 6, a perfect 100, and they're a multiple winner. Are you easing up on them? Is that what you're doing? Huh? Okay. Chipotle Mexican Grill, 6245 Highway 6, 98, and they're a multiple winner. Coco Plaza by Oros. This is the first time that they've received it since they changed the name from Oros to that. They're a first-time winner, and they scored 100. Don Julio's Mexican Restaurant, down in Sienna, 96, and they're a multiple winner. Einstein Brother Bagel, 6261 Highway 6, a 97, and they're also a multiple winner. Elvacaro, 2140 FM 1092, this is their first time, and they scored a perfect 100. Fridays at 3760 Cartwright, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 97.
Y'all can circle back here.
Yeah, come on behind me. Buzz's Taco, 4875 Highway 6, it's a first-time winner, and they scored 100. All right, the Grand Indian Catering at 6701 Highway 6, it's their first time, and they scored a 96. Very good. The Colachi Factory, 6215 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and she scored 100. Mahima, Mahima Indian Bistro, 2258 FM 1092, they're a first-time winner, and they scored Multo Beany, is that right, Beany? They're a first-time winner, they're at 8817 Highway 6, and they scored a 98. Neesum's Kitchen at 5211 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and scored a 97 this Oh Hickory Inn, multiple winner, 96. Pizza Hut, 2292 Texas Parkway, this is their first time, and they're a 97. QQ China, 10,00330 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 95. All right, Popeyes, 10,0220 Highway 6, they scored a 96, and they're a multiple winner. Another one of our first-time winners, Red Oak Grill, 511 Highway 6, and they scored a 97.
Y'all gonna tighten up back here.
Yeah, I know. We'll have to start holding this at a bigger arena, huh? All right. Let's see, we got the Seven Spice Cajun Kitchen at 2240 Texas Parkway, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 97. Shipley's, the policeman's favorite store. 2451 FM 1092, they're a multiple winner at a 96.
You will.
All right, you can take it to them tomorrow, all right? That's up here. The Smoothie Factory at 5330 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 98. Now we got the Snowflake Donuts, guys. They're at 4225 Sienna Parkway, and they scored a 95, and they're a multiple winner. Dar Sanna McGill, 4811 Highway 6, and they scored 100. By the way. All right, then we get into all the subways in town. The Subway at 4225 Sienna Parkway, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 96. Subway at 10,0350 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 96. And then the Subway at 10,0350 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 96. And then we got the Submarina at 6245 Highway 6, and this is their first time, and they scored a 100. Then we got the Taco Bell and Pizza Hut Combo at 5511 Highway 6, they're, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 97. We've got Tornada Taco at 2461 FM 1092, they are multiple winner, and they scored a 96. Wendy's at 5515 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and scored a 97 this time. Whataburger at 8820 Highway 6, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 95 this And last but not least, Wingstop, 2240 Texas Parkway, they're a multiple winner, and they scored a 97. Give all these people a big hand, isn't it?
I keep telling you, bring samples, guys. Next time, bring samples. This council gets hungry. Congratulations to all of you. You bet.
Thank you all. All right, go fix some food for all these people to go eat, right? Thank you all. You did a picture. Go outside and get it.
See if they could all go outside downstairs.
Yeah. She'll go take it downstairs. Thank you, mom.
Congratulations. There's someone who spends a lot of money at every one of these places. Who else is there?
What'd you say? Full house? We got the regular meeting, nobody here.
Take a look at the camera, it's okay. Take a picture for, they have pictures on.
Oh yeah, that's true. Right in his cabinet.
All right, item four, public comments. I did not have, did not have anyone sign up for public comments. Item five are staff reports. Item five is a presentation on the quarterly financial report for the period ending December
Mayor and Council, good evening. The, this presentation is for, as you said, the quarter ending December 31st, 2012. It's to, purposes to provide an overview of the city's general fund, performance highlights, and the Missouri City Recreation Leisure, LGC, financial status. It's a, it represents 50% of the fiscal year. This first slide is the thing that focuses most on, is the total revenues, year-to-date actual, of $13,037,019, which is 41% of our budgeted revenues, and the total expenses of $16,453,00912, which is 46% of our budget expenditures. And as I said, this is 50% of the year, so that's within. This next slide is the revenues, and the year-to-date revenues through December 2012 are $13,037,019, as I said. And for the same period last year, they were $11,773,124, which is a 10.7% increase. And the main reason for the increase is $681,000 increase in property taxes, and $313,000 in sales taxes compared to last year at this time.
Can I have this on Dropbox? This page here? The one with the revenue analysis?
Yes, sir. You should have.
Is it in? Is it?
In Dropbox.
That's not Dropbox.
Yes, sir, I can do that. This, this.
At least I can't see.
This, the next slide is the sales taxes, which we're pretty happy with, through six months, or through December. Collections were $3.4 million versus, versus last year at this time, were $3 million, which is a 12% increase. And as you can see by that chart, it's a, it's a good upward trend that we, we hope stays that way. Some other selected revenue items that I like to point out. Building permits are up 81% from last year, $88,453. Plan check fees are $44,544, which is 69% increase over last year. And infrastructure fees are 235% increase over last year for $117,000, which that means there's things in the pipeline coming, coming through. So that's good. These expenditures, this slide is just showing the expenditures that were $16,453,000 compared to last year at $15,101, which is a 8.9% increase. And the main reason for that is in the contractual services category, we booked all our allocation expenses upfront, and we're probably gonna change that next year. And this show, this pie chart shows the total expenditures and how it's divided up. As you can see, personnel, 61% of total expenditures, 13% is commodities, 23% is contractual services. This slide is just a comparison of budget versus actual in each of the major categories of, of the actual expenditures. Again, salaries and wages is 46% of budget, benefits at 40%, commodities at 59%. And again, that contractual services at 73%. But overall, it's a 46% spending of budget for half the year.
For half year.
Right. And that's even with paying upfront, or expensing our allocation already for the total year. So we're looking good. And again, this, this slide is cash and investment summaries. The major difference is a $5 million increase, 5.87 billion dollar increase, which is primarily due to tax collections. And we've included some performance highlights in, in the packet that you received, you should have received, anyway. There, the department heads submitted quite a bit of information for you to look at as well, but I selected just a few of those. In the police department, they replaced the existing computer-aided dispatch and records management systems with the OSSI platform. Fire department held its first annual fire department open house on October 6th for citizens to visit the fire station. Public works removed and replaced 8,200 square feet of concrete at Deerwood and North Fountain, and another section of 6,800 square feet at 4, at the 4,400 block of Lexington Boulevard. Communications launched the first city, Missouri City Citizens University. Finance completed migration of payroll processing to the new ERP system, and we also received the P Card rebate check of $115,000. Parks held their tricks and treats in the park, their Snow Fest Festival, and began in the month, in the last quarter, city, city-held landscape improvements.
Change your.
Slide.
Change your slide, there you go.
Sorry. This slide, now we move into, I'm not gonna hit this too hard, 'cause Tyson did this not too long ago, a couple weeks ago. Missouri City Recreation and Leisure, total revenues were $1.5 million, expenses were 1.7, with a $245,000 deficit. So, but we know the reasons for a lot of that new startup of, of an operation like This slide is, breaks down the revenues by categories. Green fees were collected, were $736,000, or 45% of their budget. Their budgeted projection. Merchandise sales were $98,251, or 56% of projection. Cart and trail were $287,000, or 46%. And food and beverage was $399,000, or 70% of their budget. And the pie chart down below shows those broken out between the total expenditures. I mean revenues. Those are revenues. This is the expenditure page. If you look at the July through December, actual contract hiring and mowing was $675,000, or 41% of budget. Inventory purchases were $300,000, or 173% of budget. Leases and rentals were $56,000, or 9%. Personnel was $392,000, or 68%. And so forth. Again, the major part of that pie, the expenditures, is the hiring and mowing of, of the facility. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if, if you have them.
You know, I have one.
Yes, sir.
You know, going back to, on one of your slides, it says that, I find it here. Those sidewalk repairs, 50 sidewalk repairs, you know where they were?
I do not know. We'd have to, I'd have to get that information for you.
This is, this is for the half of it, right?
For half of the year.
This is not the entire year.
This is for half the year.
Yeah, I still wanna know.
Okay.
Actually, that's for the first quarter.
This is for first and second quarter. This is through December. Says, yeah, 50 sidewalk work orders were completed. We can get that broken down, I'm sure.
Very good. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Five B is presentation on the rec and tennis center fees. Five B is presentation on the rec and tennis center fees.
Mayor and council, on April 16th, 2012, city council adopted a schedule of fees for the Recreation and Tennis Center. The fees were for annual and monthly memberships, daily guest passes, tennis court usage per ninety minutes. The fee schedule includes rates for residents and non-residents based on different categories of youth, senior, adult, and family memberships. The fee schedule was approved by the Park and Recreation Board by a seven to two vote. Staff research produced a fee schedule based on comparable facilities in our market, some well-known centers in Texas, and what we thought the market would be for our area. Members of our old facility were given six months, June four, three, fourteenth through January 31st, of free memberships to our new facility. That's how we wanted to reward our old loyal membership. Uh, some membership.
Excuse me, before you go along too far, because I, I think it comes a question of why we even having this discussion. And, uh, and, uh, and the fact of it is, is that I, I think one person wrote an article in the newspaper complaining about non-residents paying less than a resident, which is, where I understand it, is not quite accurate, depending on what category you're in. Nobody that's a resident pays less than a non-resident by that category. And, and reading them interrupting is because I don't want it to appear like we got a big problem here, when there isn't a big problem. Uh, uh, and, and I don't want you to feel like you have to justify something that we've already approved, and that seems to be working well.
I appreciate that.
Well, I think it's good that we look at it. We look at the fees with the golf course, and people have raised the issue with it, and enough that we needed to put it on here and look at, uh, this. And I think we need to look at it every so often to make sure that we are competitive. I know that we've had some people that are now going to the Y that are asking us, and I know Larry's working on trying to get the, whatever that program that Medicare has that.
A couple of them. There's the Silver Sneakers, and then there's another Silver.
Silver script.
To get that over here. Uh, but again, I, you know, uh, we, we've gotta be cognizant of the fact that the citizens of Missouri City are paying for that facility.
Well, that's, that's.
But Jerry, let me finish.
That's, that's kinda true.
Let me finish.
Go ahead on.
I built a facility when I was president of Homeowners Association in our neighborhood for the neighbors to use. Within a matter of six months, none of the neighbors living in that subdivision could utilize that facility because people from outside the subdivision had come in and monopolized it. Okay? I don't want that to happen in this facility. The citizens of Missouri City have paid for this. They're paying for it with taxes. I just wanna make sure that the citizens of Missouri City, and I'm more concerned about what you and I talked about, what I saw happen in that facility is that kids came in and took over the basketball courts, and yet the kids who lived in that subdivision never got to use it. I do not want that to happen again. Okay? We're a public facility. We can't restrict them from using it, but we can sure price it different, just like we do on the golf course. You pay, you play on the golf course, you're gonna pay a non-resident fee that is somewhat different than the resident's fee, and it should be that way. The question that Jerry brought up is right. The gentleman who raised the question is a senior, and his question was, why is a non-resident youth paying less than I pay as a resident senior? That was the question.
They don't, and he's not a senior.
And so, he wasn't comparing the resident seniors to non-resident seniors, but he brought up a valid point and one that we need to look at.
Well, with our respect to our seniors, I mean, we have this item placed on the agenda. I'm very interested for you to finish.
Absolutely.
The presentation before any interruption. I would appreciate that. Would you continue?
And if I could just.
Because I, I'm very interested, known.
Just for the record, though, uh, the gentleman who, who, who's made an issue out of, is it an, an adult member?
Right.
Not a senior.
Exactly.
But anyway, on, on with the, the presentation. Uh, at this point, through January 31st, we have six hundred and fourteen total memberships sold, five hundred and ninety-three to residents, and twenty-one to non-residents. Of those non-resident memberships, we have one adult annual, seven adult monthly, two family annuals, one senior monthly, and ten youth monthly, monthly. What I've done on this first slide is show you the monthly revenue in memberships since we've been open. July 14th was our, was our grand opening.
And that's in waving first six months of those non-members. So.
Yes, sir.
Starting in February, that number changes.
Actually, the, the legacy memberships ran through January 31st. So, if, at the end of December, I'm sorry, the end of January, uh, the legacy folks signed up, and that's where we see the spike.
Okay.
In memberships. We had our second best month of all time with our legacy members signing back on. We had a really killer first month, had, I think, five thousand on the grand opening day, and had our best month, uh, so far. And then we sort of settled into a groove of, of seven thousand plus per month. We had a, a dip in November, an increase in, in, in December, and then we spiked up again in January with over eleven thousand. And, uh, if I could just give you some other revenue information, this is strictly memberships. We've, to date, through programs at the facility, uh, generated sixty thousand, ninety-six dollars in programs. Rentals, and that includes the, the old auditorium, we're at forty-two thousand, five hundred and fourteen, and you throw the fifty-nine thousand, sixty in there, we're at one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six seventy, which is actually, actually a little bit ahead of what we projected when I gave that operations plan report to you all way back when.
Yeah, the expenses, right. That's all revenue.
Yeah.
Of our expenses.
What is our total monthly break-even expenses?
I don't have that information offhand.
So are we running at a loss or profit?
Yes, we are. We're, we're shooting for about thirty-five percent cost recovery. If we maintain this revenue projection right now and expend every bit of the money allocated for recreation, we'll be right at thirty-six percent cost recovery.
And that's what you budgeted?
Yes.
Let me also inter, interject, because, um, uh, the, the topic is about fees and not about revenue projections and break-even. And, but I will point out a couple things. That program wouldn't work down there if the park administration is not located there, because the park's budget pays most of the utility fees, just like it did in the old facility. Okay? So it wouldn't work.
Sure.
The, the other side, the other side to that is, is that the land cost was by a grant. Okay? So we, we can't just say people can't use the facility if they are non-resident. Now, part of your issue, mayor, is it's not fees, it's managing the place. That's, that's where that goes to. If we got people that can't play or get on the court, that's a management thing, that's a program thing. That's not a fee thing. Where, now, that other place you were talking about, they may not have been managing as well or what have you, but.
Hard to manage.
Yeah, no, you can manage it, you know, but also ki, kids can't go there and think they can just segregate themselves in a group and don't play with other folk. I mean, you can't do that. Facility would never work that way. And so, I mean, we may as well say that now as an, as an, uh, expec, expectation. Uh, but, uh, but, you know, the fees by category, no citizen pays more than a non-resident. There, there, there are handicapped people that I know that come and use that facility, that are non-residents that also came from the old facility over there that support the place and everything. And, you know, people's money in Texas also contributed to at least that part of the project through, through the grant. So, so I, you know, the other side to that is, is that our competition is not the fitness connections and the LA, LA Fitness. Our competitions is another, other nonprofits that provide the same or similar kind of service, and, uh, and, uh, where we are not as money-generated and, and cost-generated as some of those other places. And we're lower, we're the lowest non-profit in the area.
I recognize that, um, that we've been operating six months, and there's some startup pains, and we're gonna have to tweak it from time to time. And we might have to change, you know, some management decisions on this. It might even be fees. But I think what we probably need to do is just kind of back off of this and kind of let you do. And manage. And, uh, so, and then let you make some decisions based on this. You're gonna tweak it. Everybody who's been in management understands that, and that's startup, that's startup time. So, uh, right now, you are right at where you projected, and, uh, I, I imagine the programs that you have, uh, two years or a year from now is gonna look a little bit different from what you have right now. So let's just give you an opportunity to make sure that that happens.
Larry, let me just ask a few questions. Uh, you presenting this report today was based on just to let us know the report, or, or is it based off of a resident and non-resident issue?
I was asked to bring this to council, just, just for discussion.
For discussion?
Yeah.
So, uh, at, so are we discussing fees or, or non-resident fees and resident fees, or we're just, we're just getting a staff report?
You're getting both. As far as you're getting a staff report or presentation on the issue of fees, where we are on fees and just factual information towards it.
Okay.
If council wants to discuss policy towards the fees, that's the right of the council in relation to this item for, and give direction for future action.
So the report that's given today is based on six months of report of where we are today. So are we going to have a discussion on non-resident residential fee? I mean, apparently the mayor said that that was the, there was a.
Y'all are having that now.
Have that right now.
The question is, does it continue, or does it one where you say?
Okay.
Go ahead, and, I mean, I'm hearing different things. So really what y'all need, you gotta come to is some kind of consensus on either finish the rest of the information, come to some type of consensus on future direction, something of that nature.
Okay. You have any more to present?
I just wanted to include some what I thought were interesting numbers.
I'll ask afterward.
Well, but, and, and I'm, and I'm gonna be a little paint. What the agenda item says is, is a presentation of Recreation and Tennis Center fees. That's what we should be discussing.
Okay.
Then let me ask my question. I hope you don't mind. So then, so according to our, our fee rates, today we have resident and non-resident, right?
Yes.
Now, is that, is that breaking down to seniors, middle, youth, kids, the non-resident and resident?
Yes. Uh, this slide right here has youth individuals' annual fees. It has the adult individual annual fees and senior individual annual fees. Now, this is, you pay in advance. We took the monthly rate times eleven and came up with the, the annual amount if you paid in full. They basically get a month free.
Okay. So, so I guess going back to the question is, is a non-resident, or, let me ask, is a resident paying less, paying more than a non-resident?
Per category, no.
What category? So they're not at all?
If you look on, at the screen, the categories that you have resident, non-resident, you have it broken up into age categories. So when Parks Board and Council approved this last year, y'all stated this is how you wanted it broken apart. Uh, and so it's one where the complaint was that, as an adult, I'm a resident, I'm paying two hundred and seventy-five dollars per year, but there's a kid that comes in, you know, this fifteen, sixteen-year-old, and he's a non-resident, he's paying a hundred and sixty-five dollars per year, and so he's paying a lower rate than I am, but I also am in a different age category. So if I had an, essentially an orange to orange, uh, and I was a fifteen-year-old kid, I'm paying a hundred and ten dollars per year compared to the non-resident of a hundred and sixty-five dollars per year.
Okay.
Mayor. Have we, how many complaints have we had about this?
I've had three comments that I've dealt with regarding fees. The, the gentleman who's voiced his concern in an email, um, another gentleman who, who was a legacy member who complained about the thirty-dollar a year fee at the old facility, and, uh, he obviously thought the fifteen dollars a month as a senior was, was too much compared to his thirty dollars annually that he paid at the old facility. And then there was just a, a very nice, uh, lady here recently who just made a comment, and she wasn't wrong, that we would get more people in the door if our fees were lower. So those are the only three.
Or lower?
Were lower.
Lower. So.
But you had three people join that left another facility that's saving a light bulb by joining yours just within the last two weeks.
Yeah. And the other thing is, if you compare category to category, the resident is paying less anyway.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Larry, so what is your projection for the next six months? Are you expecting the membership for non-resident or resident to go up? If so, what percentage?
We were sort of flying blind the first six months, and we just sort of compared what we did at the previous facility numbers-wise, hoping that would transfer to the new facility. It, it really has. We've done some different things with programs. We've got a fitness-oriented staff member right now that we think is really gonna make the fitness part of what we do grow. Uh, as far as projecting an increase, that's, you know, really hard for me to say right now, and I'd, I'd hate to be wrong, but I'm, I'm, I'd, I'd be shocked if we didn't increase our memberships, just based on some different program things that we're doing. We're gonna have a summer camp, we're gonna have a spring break grant.
But with our projection for the future, how could you be prepared for staff and programs and things like that to accommodate the future needs? I mean, no projections at all, no planning at all?
We can look at trends.
So whatever come.
We can, we can look at trends and see, uh, how we need to staff differently, how we need to staff different times of the day versus adding staff. Well, our Saturdays have changed since we opened up. They were fairly sparse. Now, we're, we're adding an extra seven.
Basically, you have, you have no goal for the next six months. Whatever come.
I had a goal of thirty-five percent cost recovery and about three hundred and twenty thousand total revenue for the Recreation Division. We are on pace to beat that by a little bit.
You also have a couple of outreach effort things coming up there. Fitness open house on March 2nd.
Yes, we're gonna do a lot more things, exposing facility to different people. Fitness open house on March 2nd. We're gonna showcase, showcase the new staff member and some, some fitness things, new fitness programs. Uh, I think the tennis program's gonna get nothing but stronger as we get more people involved, you know?
If you get one of those Medicare Advantage contracts, that's gonna be tremendous because our rate is lower than anybody's.
And those contracts actually pay for senior members.
They pay for it, yeah.
Our daily fees.
Pardon me?
Do we have that many people who?
That's the most surprising statistic of, to, to me. We've got, that's a five-dollar day pass.
Right.
Doesn't matter, resident, non-resident.
Right.
We've sold our, I think we projected six thousand dollars for the whole year. We've already made eight thousand, five dollars in day passes. And that's sixteen hundred and one day passes sold in the first six months. That's very surprising.
Not to go back and, and, and try to go back over the process, but why did we have just one daily fee, not a resident, non-resident? Was there some, some rationale there as to?
We figured that that was probably more going to be non-residents anyway, people that were in town. And if you figured, you know, if, if, it's, for residents, it'd be just, you'd be discouraged to do that four or five times a ye, a, a month. It's just, it's cheaper to be a, a member. So it's actually per visit, it's a little, it's, it's a much higher rate. We've sort of programmed that thinking it would be non-residents mainly utilizing that, uh, day pass.
So your, your staff recommendation is to continue the approved fees as is?
I'd like to see the fa, fees remain the same for the first year, have an annual report with much more detailed information, attendance, usage by area, and, or even sooner if, if, if that's what the council wants. But review fees every year, bring it back to council, take it to the park board, and then come back to you all for the, for the recommendation of, of how we continue with fees.
Larry, the other thing is, is that committee still in place? And I know there was.
This committee?
Yeah. Or, or we let that one go?
It's, it's in, it's in place, but it's meeting quarterly now instead of monthly since we've gotten, gotten everything off the ground and programs in place.
And that committee was mostly just to help get started. It wasn't, it wasn't to take the park board plays. It was just supplementing with some people who had some experience playing tennis and stuff.
Yeah, Larry, I'm. What I'm seeing here is that you've been for the last six months ramping up all kinds of different programs because it's, you know, a new facility and doing a really good job. And, uh, you know, from reports and so forth that I've read, you're gonna be ramping up all kinds of other things for the rest of these six months. I'd like to, uh, like you say, wait until this first year is over with before we, uh, address a. I'd like to, like you say, wait until this first year is over with before we address a problem that hasn't occurred yet and it may not ever occur yet. But, you know, but if it does, then we need to address it. But I'm, I'm fine with how things are right now.
Appreciate that. But, and we've got a new software system that went into effect October. We've worked some of the operating bugs out of that. We can give you all monthly information now that's, that's more detailed and will keep you more current on, on numbers, revenue, attendance figures, things like that.
Oh, we're looking at the LG, you know, more often than I think we should. This is a facility too, so.
Larry, the other.
Leisure Corporation, we're looking at it and I think this is a facility that taxpayers want us to take a look at. And I know there was a lot of conversation early on about the number of tennis courts. Are they all being utilized?
Yeah, I would say so. The tennis program, Thursday night, it, there's not a court available right now. I mean, it's Monday and Thursday.
Monday, Wednesday, and Thursdays are league days. That's when your leagues play and we don't do a Sunday league, but we should league.
One of the things that, what was the question, Mayor?
I said, you know, there was conversation early on about whether 12 courts or 10 courts or 13 courts. I just wanted to know from, from this first six months, I guess we've got 13 courts. Are they being utilized all the time now?
Senior program is growing. We've, we've more than doubled from the, the first go-around to this.
Good.
Second, leagues are very strong. There's.
Friday.
Pardon?
Friday, last Friday.
Friday mixers.
Last Friday.
If, if.
Oh, we had, we're having more tournaments there, yeah, we had a high school tournament.
An answer from staff. Larry, you keep a log of court time?
Oh, yes, we do. We count, we, we walk around the facility every hour on the hour, counting specific areas, how many people are out there. We, we count tennis courts, we go to the weight room, gymnasium, multipurpose room, kids zone. We keep a, a total, a, a logbook on a total per hour at each area of the facility.
That's good.
What would you think it'd be the least?
And if the, since the mayor answered that question during your reporting period, would you, would you make that part of your presentation?
Yes.
The log, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have a question? No, I was just going to ask where, where we see the least utilization? What, what area?
Batting cages.
Batting cages.
I was going to ask you how batting cages are.
Okay, give me your second least.
How many people know that it's even, that we even have them?
That's what I was going to say. Seeing as it is February and it's the beginning of baseball season, are we getting the word out to the little leagues and the pony league and so forth?
Yes, we've contacted all of associations that we do business with and we've contacted the A.D.s at the schools to let them know that we, we are up and going. And we're hopefully, hopefully get some, once baseball season kicks in. And we're actually getting a little bit more usage now with some girls softball and some younger baseball folks.
Well, I think you will here starting this time of year.
Yeah, that's what they're being outside like that and not covered, it's.
I was trying to get Larry to tell about the, the high school, the, we got the high schools back using the tennis facility. Because they used to play all of their tournaments. So, we had four high schools there Friday.
Yes.
From, from all over, Cy Fair, Brazos, Point, Brazes Port, Fort Bend, about four different school districts there, and it was packed.
And that's probably the third or fourth high school tournament we've had since we've been open. The words out there, we're out there, we got good courts.
The tennis too.
People speak very highly of the lights, best in the area.
And we're making money off of that, I assume, to some degree, huh?
We didn't, we don't charge extra for the lights.
No, I'm saying, when they have the tournaments, are we charging anything for those, for the use of those courts?
For the high school tournaments, uh, we haven't yet. We're working out a deal where we're just letting them, the museum, we're exposing our courts to more players.
Just, we're filling the stands over right now.
Yeah, you got to. You have that volleyball program now too, right?
We do have a volleyball program with, with, with youth girls and, uh, we're actually running out of gym space.
You had the pickleball yet?
We've, we've got the set, we haven't set it up yet. We do have a pickleball set.
Got the pickles, huh?
Well, but again, that's another situation that that takes the, that takes the basketball court. It is a big game. Yeah, ask Larry, it's a big game with seniors.
Very popular with seniors. It's like an indoor tennis paddle game on a basketball court. It's, it's pretty, uh, quite a following.
Pretty big, huh?
Managing the time, we're going to have to make sure that when you do those programs like volleyball and like this other stuff, that you allocate time on the basketball court for other things than other than basketball.
And that's right. That's, that's the big thing right now. We don't want to just open up doors and let people play basketball all day long. We want proper use for adult volleyball, youth volleyball.
That's my point.
And then, uh, there's boot camps that we've had going in there. That's almost too big for the dancers.
Because you hadn't been, you hadn't been open during the summer yet, my friend.
Yeah.
When school's out.
Yeah, it's going to blow up.
We got a good court in the summer last year.
Yeah. As long as we manage it and, and we allocate times for, make sure that we're managing and, and our citizen, that's my only point, guys.
But I'm going to tell you, that would be a good problem to have right now.
All right, one quick thing for me is, what's the role of the Parks Board with these, with, with the Rec Center? Is there any? Do you guys discuss fees or anything like that on that board?
They, they, we discussed fees with them and they made their recommendation before the council made their final approval. And actually, we took it back to them twice because the, the first fee schedule I took to them, they had a different philosophy. Revamped it, uh, made their recommendation and then was presented to you all for approval.
Sure. And the reason I'm asking is because I started on that board before. So, does the Rec Center, do they have, do they, you know, look at any of these reports or any of these structures or anything like that?
We've been taking, uh, Rec Center membership, revenue, and attendance information to the, to the Park Board, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are we getting utilization of the meeting rooms better now? Have organizations that are using it?
There's a few. Uh, it's mostly rentals more than meetings. I think, uh, there's a, there are a few more groups that are still over here at the municipal court.
That's not a bad thing. That's not a bad thing.
What?
Getting more rentals.
Oh, no, that's why I wanted, I'm open, we get more.
Yeah.
I think last year, last year for rentals, I think we were at, you know, I, I take that back. We're pretty much on pace to, to do what we did last year.
Those rooms don't do anything sitting there.
Doing, being on pace to do what we did last year is pretty impressive considering the city center's now there and a lot of people are probably going there for meetings also.
Are we getting anybody coming down here?
Yes.
To the old facility?
Yeah, we, there, though, that big room is still pretty popular.
Because eventually.
Old courtroom.
Eventually, we're going to lose those activity rooms to activities, other kind of activities.
Okay. All right, we look forward to seeing a report at 12 months at least.
Well, with budget coming up, you'll go, I mean, we'll go through this as far as fees, revenues, expenditures, you'll go through that all in budget coming up very quickly.
Let's just make sure we have all of the details that other people have wanted to see in that. Usage and stuff. Okay, thank you, Larry. Item six is a consent agenda, is our motion to approve the consent agenda's written.
So, move. Second.
Councilman Marshall made the motion, who made the second? Councilman White made the second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven are public hearings and related actions. 7A zoning and public hearings, there are none. 7B, public hearings and related actions, there are none. Item eight are appointments, there are no appointments tonight. Item nine are authorizations. 9A is consider authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between the City of Missouri City and Fort Bend County to allow Fort Bend County sheriff's deputies to deploy out of the City of Missouri City Police Mini Station and fuel patrol vehicles at the City of Missouri City Fuel Island with monthly reimbursements by the county.
Move approval.
Thank you. Councilman Marshall made the motion, Councilman Emery made the second. Sound like a good idea, chief.
Well, we can say that they're already deploying out of there, correct?
Well, I guess, really, this is.
Primarily, we're talking about the fuel, right?
Yeah, this is the fuel.
Yes.
I mean, really, basically, they've been using the facility, but it's so that they can use our fuel island and then we've got a reimbursement plan in place.
Keep them from having to drive all the way back to the sheriff's department to get fuel.
Are we cheaper than the county's gas? 2% higher, well, it better be higher.
Yeah, we need to market up some more.
2% is convenience fee, okay? I don't care.
Keep these deputies in our city longer, so that's the goal.
Well, and that, and I think, you know, those guys having to drive all the way back down to the county to refuel is taking them off of the streets and out of our areas that need it so desperately. So, I think it's a great idea and I know, obviously, they appreciate not having to go all the way back down there and burning that gas. I just want to make sure that, that that convenience is to our advantage.
But I did want to point out that it, that mainly we're talking fuel, that they have already been deploying out of the mini stations.
When is our fuel contract up?
I'm going somewhat off memory, but I believe it comes up around November or December of this year. We signed, uh, just recently with Apache, uh, recently.
Is it, and Scott, is our contract, I know it's a price per gallon, but is there a limit on the number of gallons on that contract?
No, sir.
So, this isn't going to affect us at all?
No, sir.
Having a limit on the number of gallons?
We've, we've actually done some calculations, just rough numbers on what we could expect to see and we've actually passed that by the supplier and that's not an issue.
Are there any volume discounts that you can give if you increase the, the volume?
No, no volume discounts. Fuel is such a volatile commodity right now that, uh, nobody wants to lock into anything long-term.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, and he brings up a good point. If we're going to, if we're going to jointly utilize this with the county, is there any advantage of us looking down the road, uh, going in with them under one big contract that does probably have some volume discount to it?
Uh, that, that could be a possibility in the future. Uh, right now, right now, our estimate is between 100 and 120,000 extra gallons a year, which is.
Oh, that's nothing.
For what our use is, is a drop in the bucket, uh, on that. So, it, it's really not going to impact.
Yeah, that isn't anything. Good. All right. Any other comments? It'll be quiet while as everything's rolling. All right, there's been a motion by Councilman Marshall and a second by Councilman Emery, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Item 9D is consider awarding a contract for the construction of the city center, Quail Valley Kart Barn and related projects.
Mayor and council, this item, as mentioned, is an award of a contract for the construction of the cart storage building. Uh, the cart storage building currently is planned to hold 135 carts, includes a cart washing station that meets the NPDES required standards. It also includes site paving and drainage infrastructure, um, to, that, that has not been completed yet and the demolition of the existing cart storage building and related site paving. We received bids from five different groups, um, and uh, we received four bids, sorry, four bids, I said five, it's four. They range from 100, $1,096,900 to $1,238,000. Their spread from low to high was about $141,000 spread. It was a real tight bid with one outlier at the $1,238,000. The low bidder was about $62,000 below the average bid, uh, which is about 5.4% below the average bid. The difference between the low bidder and the second low bidder is about $52,000, about a 4.5% difference, which means we have a really good, uh, set of bids here. The recommended low bidder is Bass Construction. They are here tonight, Buck Bass is here tonight. Bass Construction has done a number of projects with the City of Missouri City, including fire stations, E.O.C. building. They did repairs on the old clubhouse after Hurricane Ike and they've done many similar projects in South Texas. And staff recommends a ward to Bass Construction.
Well, I know we had lengthy discussion about it last meeting, so, but if anybody has any questions, it's Scott.
I move that we accept the bid from Bass Construction and a contract award in an amount of $1,555,180. That's what I'm supposed to say? Is that the right number?
That is correct.
That's correct. Councilman Emery made the second. Mayor Pro Tem White made the first. 150-day contract?
150-day contract. Right now, we're looking at September of this year for.
Or less, huh? Weather, weather pending?
No.
We don't want the same thing again, huh?
Now, this is, this contract.
You know that.
Because I want to be upfront about things. This contract is in excess of what we originally.
Yes.
Had allocated by, about how much?
It is about, um, hang on, I'm trying to, about from 4 mil, 400,000, 450,000 above what was in the original bidder's price for this project.
And we are funding this through.
We are funding it, um, from drainage, uh, well, from the remaining project balance in that, uh, from drainage funds, uh, from metro funds that will be cash flowed and from savings in the Turtle Creek Mission Valley design contract.
Okay, but the drainage funds will be used for drainage on the.
The NPDES, non-res.
Just trying to make sure we get everybody to understand. Understanding what these funds are being used for.
Paving for paving.
Okay. And, uh, and, and this means that we won't be holding up any other projects that would have been scheduled.
That is correct.
Or worked on, such as Gregory?
That is correct.
Okay, that would still proceed.
We will be coming to the council with an award at the next meeting on.
That one is going to be moved about 90 days.
No, they're going, they're going to work out.
Now, we'll be able to cash flow both at the same time.
They're going to be able to work out the cash flow in the contract.
I know originally we were talking about moving it 90 days.
Right, and we. The Gregory project will take about nine months for, as far as, and this would increase it out.
They're going to space it out.
All right.
So, we can make that work.
Okay. Scott, just, that helps Bobby's.
As, as part of, I'll. I think you should change the name from, uh, Quail Valley Gart Barn to some kind of Quail Valley Gart Mansion or Building or something. I don't think a barn is worth $1 million something shed for horses and cow.
We'd call it a cart storage facility.
That's what my impressions of a barn.
Cart maintenance facility.
And, and I think a miscal, I think a miscalculation of almost 1, 400, something thousand going from 750,000 to 1,500,000 is a lot of miscalculation. Would you admit that some, some mistake was made along the way?
Well, it, it's not necessarily a miscalculation. Uh, there's actually a couple of components coming into play. We believe the original bidder left a lot of money on the table and his effort on what it would take to complete, uh, this project. But then we have also sent it, seen an increase in price and construction activity over the last year to 18 months on that. As a percentage of the project, the cart barn was originally estimated to be about 7.5% of the Quail Valley City Center project. And now it's closer to about 12% on that. It is an increase over the, what was originally planned, but we also believe that there was some money left on the table by the original contractor based upon the performance on this contract.
Well, what, what, what than you, the staff recommended us the original contract for this whole project? And we count on your judgment to vote for the original contracts. So, are you saying that they make a mistake of, of miscalculating the, uh, the bid?
Yes. You would have seen a change order from.
Absolutely.
That company asking for more money in order to complete the project.
They would not have been able to finish it for that. But, you know, and it goes, Danny, goes back to what your question is. Unfortunately for us as a city, it gets back to that same old thing. Legally, we're required to take the low bidder unless there's some reason that we have found out that that low bidder can't do the job. At the time that we had, that we took Summit on, they checked out, they had built colleges. There was no reason legally for us to turn that bid down, right, Caroline?
They were identified as the most responsible lowest bidder.
So, we had to accept them. You know, I'm like Danny, I blame a lot of people. I, you know, I put more blame on the architect than I do the contractor, quite frankly. But that's a different story. But it's like Scott said, we would have never been able to build that facility even with Summit without them coming up with your favorite change order. And there would have been large change orders and we would have had to have said no and stop it at mid construction or give them the money. And unfortunately, we're at that point, so.
But they, they had a history of doing that kind of stuff, didn't they?
Well.
Not at that point.
Not at that point.
Not when we awarded the bid, I can tell you.
I'm sorry.
They had one city, uh, it was either League City or, uh, somewhere's on that side of town that they had an issue that was taking a little bit longer. But even when we contacted that city, they said that they're meeting the project plans and specs on that. But subsequent to that, uh, they've had a history of that throughout the United States. And, uh, when I talked to the bond attorneys, you mentioned there were 35 different projects that were in serious.
They took on too much too soon.
Mayor, would, would there be some legal mechanism to control this kind of, of, of miscalculation from, from a contractor? I mean, somebody have to be responsible for this, this damage, not the citizens. And, uh, and how about the legal department? I mean, if they make a mistake, they should pay for their mistake.
And as I believe you may be aware, we have entered into a settlement agreement for, and that has resulted in some of the monies that are being utilized to build this.
We're getting some of the money out of it.
How much are we getting?
So, the change order we signed as a result of that settlement agreement was about $618,000.
Yeah, we got the bonding company involved in all of it.
So, so in the future, how do you control con, construction company that can come in at a lower bid? And along the way, they make several change orders and then it turned out to be much higher than the, the second lowest bid? Would we come up with a mechanism to control that?
It starts.
It's got the legislature.
Kind of as a total quality management, where, you know, selecting the right design firm, whether it's an architect or an engineer, making sure we have good plans, and then using the delivery methods appropriate for the project, whether it's a competitive steel proposal, whether it's a straight bid build award on that, checking the references, doing all the, checking the bonding rating, you know, and we actually go a little bit above, and we check, we contact other cities, not just the references that are on the application form, because nobody's going to put a bad reference on that type of form. So we call our co-compadres in other cities and ask if they have experience with them, and we try and get a feel for that contractor. We have in the past recommended to council, when we've seen something that's really grossly out of whack, that we see that there could be an issue. For example, we did that on the Candelosi Buffalo, sorry, the Buffalo Run Park original project that we partnered with Tech Dot on, where we actually recommended not to use that, and that ended up with a lot of negotiations between us and Tech Dot on that.
Let me say this, Scott. Number one, the city center is very good decision. I'm proud to raise my hand and say, yeah. I eat that a lot. But what a.
I said, that was good.
I'm going to ask you, Mayor, to, let's adhere to the decorum, as far as professionalism when each council is speaking. One of the things that I ask is that in the next three months, you know, we go to another fiscal year, why are we doing this right now? Why is it necessary to just do this, this cart? What did you call it, Danny?
Cart storage.
Cart storage.
Don't call me a cart barn, because I'm not comfortable with it.
And we need to complete it. We need to complete it.
Well, and to a large degree, that's the answer right there. We need to complete the project. But, for example, in our existing cart facility, we're having issues with even being able to fully charge the carts. A couple weeks ago on a Saturday, we had a fire at the electrical drop that we were charging carts by bringing out generators and extension cords out there to charge the carts. The existing facility is a facility that in-house we created to be able to store. We took what we acquired from the golf course and with city forces and building maintenance and public workforces, basically got us something that would get us by for a while. So we do have a need for the cart barn. The existing facility is also not NPDES compliant for our stormwater quality permit on that. So this keeps us bringing forward into compliance with our NPDES permit on that. We still have about, you know, four months to the next fiscal year, and we've got a project that's not complete at this time. We still have some extra dirt in the back. We don't have all the cart paving. It's still not a fully functional facility out there. So staff is recommending moving forward with this on that for those reasons.
Scott, isn't there also a safety issue in that old cart barn? I mean, from, you know, a safety issue for our employees?
The old cart barn is not code compliant at this time.
Well, probably if we wait, it would just cost more. We go out for bid, the bid would just probably come back in.
The council member brings up a very good point, and it's actually reflected, if you, in Wes's presentation, we talked about the increase in all the different permit fees that we're seeing for building permits. We are seeing an upturn in construction activity, quite a significant upturn in that. And so if we wait, we feel that the prices will actually be higher on that.
Scott, I'd like to hear from the gentleman from Bass and have him tell us that he's going to get this done on time and on budget and so forth.
That's a good fire station over there.
Yeah, Bobby.
Oh, he built the fire station in line.
Yeah.
There is some history. I was project manager on fire station number two. My brother Jay Bass, he did the municipal court EOC building. But we, I mean, we appreciate y'all discussing this, and we're very familiar with the process of metal buildings. We've been doing it for over 50 years, been in business in Fort Bend County since 1957. We have qualified staff that's already been out, evaluated the site, you know, we've seen, we know what's on site. There's, the existing metal building's already there. We've already went through it and kind of done some evaluation, and we know that we can get this project done and get it done successfully and on time.
How much of the material do we, do we have on? I mean, I know we've got material that was already bought.
On top of the change order for the 618, we also took possession of all the structural steel and the steel frame material. We did not take possession of a lot of the, what I would call consumables, you know, the nuts and the bolts and stuff, because we didn't want to get into a lot of those issues. But we've got probably 90% of the materials for the structural, the steel of the building. We still have the EFS system that's not on site and those kind of things out there, but we do have.
I knew we had a good bit of the material, the structural material.
Yeah, one other thing, you know, and Danny kind of brings it up, you know, we talk about it, and some people refer to it as a shed. Can you just give a real brief overview of what the electrical components and requirements are of that facility, along with the, I guess with the drainage that's required also? I mean, so people get an understanding that it's not, you know, just a, you know, a metal shed that's there to cover, you know, 135 carts.
Did we cause a problem that the Center Point had to replace the transformer this weekend?
That was due to the aging condition of the building. That was due to the aging condition of the building and the loading that was going on it.
But I thought, I mean, we've already had them replace that outside transformer twice in the last six months.
You know, I drive by the area almost every day, and I do understand the urgency that we have to move very quickly, because I think that shed is, the current one is an eyesore in addition to the safety. But when put in a very difficult position under pressure to make a decision, now knowing that, because of that miscalculation in budgeting, now we use Metro Fund, which was solely intended for sidewalk repairs and other importance, now we use that for the cart building. So it's make, make that very difficult, Mayor. I mean, I understand, I understand that. I mean.
We're there.
I understand the community standard is very important, because it's helped us to save the property value, understand all that. And I have been with that 100%. But now we're talking about a car barn, I mean, one shed. I mean, should we take that priority from all the areas and then use for the car barn? That is a challenge.
I was going to say, at the work session we held last, at the last meeting, we kind of went over this and asked as far as the components, if there were things that you wanted to change to the facilities. You know, the more you changed in order to lower the cost, the more kind of it became, went from the facility you see here to more of just a metal, metal facility with a flat roof.
But even then, you can't get it done under the, what's balanced, left in the bond?
You could get pretty close using the drainage fees and the like, but you still have as far as some of the dirt work and flat work. This was no EFS. This was the roof line changing. This was actually a metal building, actually a shed. And that's the reason we kind of had that discussion last, last meeting.
Sure.
Was in order to figure out what was the direction of the council, which we heard nothing to deviate from this path.
But then a good portion of this expense here is to be compliant with NPDES, and, you know, the electrical load that's coming into this building. I'll just give an example. One of our new industrial clients being built in my district has an area of their building that is strictly for charging up their forklifts, and that one section is almost $7 million. And it's basically a square room full of electrical.
I understand.
A whole lot of requirements that go along with it.
A whole lot of requirements. And as you, and as you talked about, let me finish. As you talked about the safety, there's a lot of safety concerns out there with sidewalks and street and drainage. I think when you first joined here, I took you and Scott Umrah on a tour of my district. I can't speak for any others. I don't know.
And this doesn't touch.
And showed you about that. So we're not just talking about safety in this building. And I totally agree with what everyone's saying here. My issue with this is, we're taking $550,000 out of Metro Fund. That is not, that is used, can be used for sidewalk repairs or streets or drainages or any of that, and putting it into this.
And the council budgeted $400,000 for sidewalk repairs, which is untouched.
I understand.
Oh, we could, we could, whenever we sell park bonds, allocate the money back from selling of those bonds. I mean, there's all kinds of ways to do this. You end up, you end up in the same place, but there are all kind of ways to do this.
But the parks bond is not sold yet, so if you sell it, that would be another tax hike.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I say, when we sell them, we can reimburse.
When we sell them.
Okay, and that's been done before. That's legal. There's nothing wrong with that. That's just a decision that we just say, whenever we're going to sell, we're going to reimburse. It all gets washed under the bridge.
We had 72% of the people voted for 17.5 million dollars. And the way I look at it, we're short or shy of sort of what, 600,000, 700,000, Scott?
618.
Something around there.
About there, yes.
Right.
Ed, in the email that you sent to us last month, you stated that you would do your best to stay within the 750,000 budget. What have you done?
We were able to cut 41,382 dollars from what the original bid was. But that was the amount that we could cut and not as far as sacrifice the appearance of the facility.
Less than 4% of the total project?
That is less than 4% of the entire, of the project. But still, and that's the reason we talked to you all at the last meeting. If you want to change the appearance of the project, I can get the cost down further. But do you, what I heard from the council at that point was, don't change the appearance of the facility. Keep the facility with the appearance that, because of the proximity to the city center, the way it is. If you want to change the look and bring the cost down, we can do that. But like I said, it's going to create a different looking facility than what you told us that you wanted to see.
Just don't change the look. We spent our money, we spent our time and effort on this particular contractor, and he kind of let us down. So we got to live with that. In fact, we can live with it for four months. That's, that's the decision-making that I'm.
To your point, so what you're saying is, if what's, what's up here, you can get this, this cart barn or shed or whatever you want to call storage, built within the cost?
No.
No.
Not that.
Not that I'm talking about, but you can't get it down to where we're not going to go over the bond?
Do you have the, either the presentation from the, like, council work session at the last meeting, or, I think, can you?
Is it in the full?
Yeah, it'll be from the last meeting. What? Okay, so we've got it down further, is that what you're trying to tell?
If it changes, you got to go back out for bids.
If we look at just the, what I'll call the appearance items on that, and they're not all appearance items, but to go to just a standard corrugated metal wall type building, that's about a $27,000 cost savings on that. If we want to eliminate some of the ornamental fence panels, we're looking about $8,640. And if we eliminate the additional dumpster pad found and gates that we do recommend staying in based upon our use of the existing dumpster pad, it's about $28,794. Everything else that we've negotiated with the contractor, we're either taking the credit, or we really recommend that we do not. For example, the canopy over the cart wash area, the grit trap in the NPDS system was designed to have that type of canopy on it to keep the extra water from getting in there. So we're really only looking at additional cost savings of approximately 60, a little over $60,000, and to get it into what would basically be the metal shed that would be out there.
What is the, what is the contingency on this bid? It doesn't show here.
We actually, and Val, you're going to have to help me on the numbers on what we put in for the carts that we had, 30, 30,000?
Well, at least looking at that. Caroline, you said, what kind of money is involved with this settlement?
Yes, the settlement that's been executed thus far was in excess of $600,000.
Basically, this project is coming in at $600,000 over the original budget, yet we're getting $600,000 at the settlement because they screwed up.
Over, over the contractor's award by council.
Right.
I don't know what, in all honesty, I don't recall what the staff's.
Now we're having to spend $600,000 more than the original contractor had allocated as this portion or as the whole project.
But not all of the 618,000 that was in that change order is available. We've had some project costs that were not, not in the original budget. For example, the parking lot on the far side of La Quinta, the asphalt parking lot.
Even 600,000.
That was 80,000 for that.
So I understand that we, you know, we got screwed here because we picked a contractor who couldn't do the job for what, for what he bid, and we're having to go over.
And we are still under contract with them, and in fact.
May I ask a couple, I'd like to ask a series of questions. If we decide that we wanted to just go with, with, you know, start in the construction tomorrow, what will be the process? What starts first? You tear the building down, right?
No. Well, if council awards a contract tonight, of course, we go through the paperwork exercise with the contractor, sign the contract, get all the bonds and everything, issue a notice, proceed. But the first work would be starting to work on removing some of the excess spoil and starting the foundation of the building, and that type of work. After the building would be complete and moved in, we'll move the carts from the old building to the new building and then tear down the old building on that.
So we remove stuff and then we start the foundation work, which takes about how long?
I will ask Buck to maybe give some of his thoughts on that.
I'm not real familiar with the schedule on this exact project, because this is not the one that I'll specifically be running. But, I mean, a typical, are you asking what, how long will it take for foundation work?
Yes. I'm trying to determine what really is the actual delay, because we do have some funds to start something.
Okay.
And then how does that, I'm trying to determine how, will that carry over until the next fiscal year, Scott?
What?
You see where I'm going with this?
Well, but the question of the finance, these will become encumbered and go into the next fiscal year. If there's a funding question, I think, I know you're asking about the, as far as actual construction piece, but on the funding question, once council, if council approves this item, these funds become encumbered and carry over into the next fiscal year.
See, I'm trying to, we don't have a fund, so what we're doing is we're going to take some funds from somewhere else and to finance this damn thing. But that's, that's where I'm having a little problem with. I understand the, that there's some issues that we need to address right now, but it's hard for me to, to decide to take money from other places that we've been talking about for four, five, six years, since 2005, you know, and then put it into a project that we spent a considerable amount of money, need it, want it, but we continue to keep piling on top of, of that.
Are any projects being delayed or changed because of this? Gregory was the only project that was in question. That will be worked out in that contract and how that.
Well, let me ask you, we got Metro money right there. We got, how much is it in Metro money?
550.
Why, why are we using that money?
The Metro Funds?
Yeah.
You're using those because that's.
No, why aren't we using it? Why are we not using it right now?
You have a, just, the Metro Funds, we don't budget to the zero dollar for Metro Funds.
And the other.
We budget as far as project specific.
We just got that 500 and some thousand just kind of hanging there when.
The other is, as the city manager mentioned earlier, it's a cash flow. We don't get all the Metro Funds in one chunk up front. They come in on a monthly basis.
But, but they come in.
But they do come in.
And we can count on Metro's funds to do sidewalks and stuff just as readily as we can count on them doing that cart barn, right?
Payment. They're just doing payment.
Well, that's the reason, when the Metro money, y'all actually did budget, as far as you budgeted the Gregory project, you budged for engineering, you budgeted the Turtle Creek Phase Two project for engineering, and the $400,000 in relation to the sidewalk repairs from the Metro Funds. So those are your budgeted funds that you said this part of Metro we're going to utilize. There's probably also. So those are your budgeted funds that you said this part of metro we're going to utilize. Uh, there's probably also other projects as part of our, uh, that are part of that as well. But then you also.
I was just hoping somehow we could get started with, with one and li, and stay within what the funds that we have available, and yet not take that from.
Under that same idea, then where would you recommend, or what are you thinking on then to find the rest of the, or recommending for the rest of the funding for the project?
Well, what I'm doing is I'm throwing a genesis out there. I'm, I'm counting on you to come up with that.
Just do it.
You want me to sit in that chair?
No, no. I mean, I didn't know if there was anything specific, if in which case we would have to look at general funds.
We don't have the money today.
Yeah.
Well, you'd have to look at general fund then if you don't want to utilize metro funds.
We had the five hundred fifty.
Because there's only certain, you only have certain fund sources to pull from. Capital project funds, we've been able to kind of pull what we can towards this project and utilize it. Then thus, that leaves you either with using a lot of the general fund, or getting back with metro as, as a revenue stream.
Okay, would you please give me some important facts, straightforward, so I can make my decision correctly? So, that's two scenarios. I mean, if we move forward, that's be great, but if we stick with the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars budget, we will suffer quality, correct?
Correct.
And, and it will cost time, right? But how, how does that impact the operations of the committee center? I mean, what, what, what disadvantages would, would create if we use the lower quality, less, less quality?
I believe.
You following what I'm saying?
You don't, you can't charge your golf carts and you can't, you know, have carts available for rental.
Can I ask?
No, 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 no.
More than clarification.
I mean, we're going to build it, but less quality. I mean, seven hundred fifty thousand, you're going to get some.
The less quality, from what I understand, is only eighty thousand dollars, Dan.
Yeah, I just want to say, Danny, can you?
Okay, I know, I know. I just want to get some.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not an easy.
Appearance is not where the cost is. The cost is in all of this.
Functionality.
And the function.
And it's the effect of revenues.
And the paving and electrical and all that.
Electrical?
It's not in the, it's not in the.
It's not just the look only?
No, no.
Oh, that is, that is correct.
We've cut the look back as thin as we can, unless you want that next to the residents in Missouri City.
To answer, I believe it's Councilmember Wyatt's, uh, question earlier on contingency, or maybe it was Councilmember Marshall, uh, we're, we do not have a project contingency in this proposed budget on that. We do have an allowance in the contract in case some piece of metal that we got from Summit was not there, uh, that is about thirty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, that, that would help us work that out, and if that's not spent, that goes back to.
And I, and I bring that up so some, so, so they would know how tight this, this situation is.
Well, that was kind of my original question.
There was no ten, there was no ten percent in that.
But on budget, on time, and know that we've already been burned once.
And Buck, that's, that, Buck, that's the issue, is that I think, you know, change orders, we don't want to see. You know, you all understand where we're coming from here, and we need to move forward with it, and you've dealt with that before, and I hope you've taken enough time to... And, and I know you guys, you've built a lot of stuff even for me, but, you know, I know that you all know what you're doing, and, and then I guess the pleading is to, you don't come in here asking us sixty days and now for a change order, because it's going to be.
Yeah, we have a problem with that.
It's going to be an eruption in here, and, uh, we're already, yeah, it's unfortunate for the citizens of Missouri City that we got into this deal, but like I said before, unless we want to change the legislature, nothing's going to ever change. They, they live by the same rules we do. They got to go with the lowest bidder. We have to go with the lowest bidder, and sometimes it just doesn't work out. A lot of times, and, but it's unfortunate for us. We need to move on with this project. The citizens of Missouri City goes back. It would not have made a hill of beans for us to have done a seventeen point seven million dollar bond issue as opposed to seventeen and a half. They wanted to see it do. And I, and I will just say that I saw a house this weekend that I stopped and got the flyer out of that's listed for ninety dollars a square foot. We have not seen ninety dollar a square foot houses in three years. And it's in a fancy house, by any means, on the golf court, but that's what this is about, guys. This is, the whole idea of what we did with that center is still the greatest thing I think this council's ever done. Are we happy that we're getting sucked into a half a million dollar hole? No, none of us are. Uh, you know, I wish we could have stopped it a long time ago and moved on, and that's a different story. But I, what I'm saying, Buck, is get that thing built, get it built within the contract that we're going to award tonight.
Have we voted on this yet?
No, we, no, we have not voted on it. And, and we, we, we've gone beyond that already, Mayor. I mean, we've gone so far, we're talking about one isolated things. I mean, the whole project, we have been together on this. Last questions. So will the use of five hundred fifty thousand dollars from Metro Bank sacrifice?
Metro Bank?
I mean, not Metro Bank, the, the Metro Bank. Okay, would that sacrifice the repair, or the street repairs, uh, of a citizen in the future?
Well, sec.
And in which way would that sacrifice them?
It's five hundred fifty thousand dollars that we won't have available for, for metro funds in the future. It's, you know, how does that sacrifice it? It is, it's, it's lost opportunity, but I can't, I can't calculate as far as what does that mean in relation to which streets, because we didn't have anything, we didn't have that money specifically budget for anything.
But there, there, there are other adjustments that we, we can make if the council choose to do that. We could simply say we're advancing this money for metro and we're being reimbursed whenever we sell parks bond. This is a park facility. This is what it's there for. The other side is, is that we're seeing tremendous excess in sales tax, which adjustments can be made later, I g, about that. So it's, it's not like we, we just totally locked in to making adjustments in the future, depending on what the income stream is.
To the best of your estimation, how long would it take to replenish that half a million fund from?
Well, we got almost that, we got almost that much in sales tax right now that we didn't expect to get.
And, and let me.
But that money's not going into this.
If our metro.
Money's not going into this.
If that metro issue had failed, you boys and girls, we would have been in a heap of problems, but with the deal that we, the, the deal that we finally worked out with the, the ten of us who get fifty percent and the city of Houston doesn't get our increase, uh, with the amount of sales tax that we're beginning to see from what Wes said earlier, we'll get there much quicker than we were before, I can tell you. So if we had, if we'd had to live with what metro wanted us to live with, I don't know where we've gotten the money to do this deal. So to answer your question, Danny, yes, it can be replenished in what period of time? I don't know, two years, maybe?
We're facing either or, wanting to see if we can have both. I mean, get this and, and.
Ed.
Yes, sir.
The question I have is, we're sitting here telling this man right here from Bass Construction that he needs to stay within our, within his cost of what we're awarding today. What happened to the, all the other seventeen point five million, or seventeen now, that we used? Have we done that? Councilmember Wynn started off by asking about the accountability piece. Here we are, we're telling him, I mean, so he goes in there, opens it up, and he, he ends up having another three hundred thousand dollars more that he needs to pour into, otherwise he's going to get it out of his own pocket. So if we would have done this due diligence part on every other construction that we had, or at least managed it to, to where we're watching all these change orders, and I think now... So how do we pay for that if he goes in there and it's, it's more than, more than what it is today?
Well, and to kind of take you back to the city center project and then work, that'll work its way into this one, we did that. That's what the bonding company got involved with. We saw that the current company that was doing the city center was failing in regard to their task and their assignments and their deadlines. We had to start getting the bonding company involved, and it's one to where that hardly ever happens. Um, but it was, in this case, it was because of the failure involved in that. And the same will happen with this one. If there's a failure by this contractor in relation to getting the job done, of hitting the timelines, and in regards to the cost that we've agreed upon, then we're going to have to get the bonding company involved, and then the bonding company is the one that comes in and takes care of the issue.
Another question is, how, we have a bond exploratory committee that's going on under your leadership now, for almost six or seven months, leading into several different projects. How does that look for us to go back and say that we have taken five hundred fifty thousand dollars for this cart barn, where we're looking at streets and drainage, and I'm sure that part of the bond exploratory committee that you're at put it forth is for streets and drainage and all of that, where yet we're taking a half a million dollars now, today, to do a cart barn?
You know, one of the interesting discussions we're having with them is in regards to streets and drainage. We actually have quite a bit of authorized debt that we haven't sold on that. A number comes to mind is twenty-seven million.
Twenty-seven.
Um, and so it's one to where, that's actually a conversation we're having with them of prioritizing which streets do we already have that bond authorization for, versus then, what's the ones we need to look at in the future that, uh, as you look out towards the next ten years, of what needs to be added to that, of that list, and then what does that cost?
We have more money that we have time to construct.
The other piece of it is, it's actually a good lesson in relation to the increasing costs that we're now seeing because of the economy. You know, two years ago, three years ago, we wouldn't have been facing this cost because of the recession issue, with, as far as everything coming back and then, and this is being seen around the board, but especially cities are starting to get hit with it. Projects that you budgeted for two years ago, three years ago, are coming in as far as where the, the cost for those projects is coming in more than the budget is, is put together for it. And so an inflationary factor is going to have to be factored into each of those things the bond exploratory committee is looking at.
So how much would you say that it went up?
On this one, uh, it's one to where the original budget was probably, Scott, what do you think that was?
The original budget for the, uh, for the city center?
Yes.
Um, I believe it was nine point four million. And so we're, you know, roughly ten, ten point one on that.
And that's just on the cost of the cart barn facility. It's, or the cart storage facility. Uh, you add to that as far as what the current cost today of the city center for that construction. Um, we haven't run that exercise, but it might be an interesting one to see as far as what the bids were a couple of years ago, when the economy was suffering, versus now, when construction is booming, what that difference in that cost might have been.
And the cart storage facility was bid as part of a larger project, so of, of course, uh, the new company has its own mobilization and demobilization costs. Those were all integrated in a larger project. So we were aware at the time
Yeah.
when we were carving this out, that we would lose those economies of scales and efficiencies when it's part of a bigger project. That was, that was part of the expectation. The marching order I was given was to extricate ourselves from the company.
Yeah.
Um, and to, to move forward, and so that's, that's, uh, why we're here now today.
But it's no longer the case, because now it's been bidded separately.
It's now been bid separately, not a part of a bigger project, so and, and.
It's different.
Uh, and as we expected, there was going to be an increase due to that lack of, uh, being part of the bigger project and the mobilization being associated with the other components of the project.
It'd be interesting to see what the El Dorado Bridge would have cost two years ago versus a million seven we're spending on it today.
So Scott, what would, I mean, Ed, what would happen if, if this project doesn't stay within this cost?
If the project doesn't stay within its cost?
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to, as far as fi, figure out areas to cut. We're not in discussion as far as going over this cost.
So we would, we would cut from what we have today?
He would have to figure out some way to, as far as cost engineer, whatever he's working on, but it's one, I mean, the agreement, that's the reason you have an agreement for the one point zero five five, uh, million dollars is in relation to, that's what you're saying, you're going to be, you're going to pay.
Seems like a friendly person, maybe you give up commissions or something.
Mayor, you and I have sat up here a lot of years. How many discussions have we had like this? In all the years, how many discussions have we had like this?
Gee, that'd be hard to say, but I can't remember any.
This is it. This is it. This, it doesn't happen that often. These things doesn't go sour. It was, I mean, Ed hit it on here. Most of this was driven by the economy, and a contractor going out there assuming more business than he could handle, probably. Which, which was a bad, but.
Jerry, so does that mean that we give up?
That's not the issue. I understand with you. What I'm saying is that's taking five hundred fifty thousand dollars out of Metro Fund. If we had that money, we would need, we would probably pass this one minute, right after it's read.
No, if we, if we, if we didn't have those metro funds, we wouldn't have money to do this with.
You're at it, yeah, you're at it.
Unless, unless we, unless we choose to do it diff, and we can make that choice. We could decide tonight.
There's a lot of choices.
This is not what I'm saying. You got to understand the money. I just told you that. You got to understand the money.
I know.
And an understanding of money is, we can say, we're going to advance this out of Metro Fund, but when we sell that one point two million dollars in parks fund, we're going to reimburse the, the, the Metro Fund back from there.
Jerry, when you sell the one point two million dollars, that, that's, that's, there's no cash there today, so that means you're going to have to raise the tax on the people.
No, you don't. No, you don't. No, you don't.
What the mayor pro tem is saying is that you're not saying that you're going to do it in the next year, though when, as far as if you.
When you sell the bond, don't you have to raise it?
The issue of the tax increase would be with the next.
You don't have to.
You do not have any as far as ability to, to raise debt or to increase the debt load
Right now.
Didn't.
this, the next fiscal year or the fiscal year afterwards. You do, as you start to look out further in your, essentially three years from now, you start to begin to have the capa, debt capacity uh, without raising taxes. What the mayor pro tem is stating is, is it's a policy decision. If you wanted to utilize this funding essentially to cash flow it for, and understand that at some future point.
That's right.
A future point not being next fiscal year, but some future point, when you as far as authorize the sale of the park bond debt, then you as far as do a reimbursement resolution at probably the next meeting to, to pay back as far as the metro funds for the five hundred fifty thousand dollars that's utilized there. That is a policy decision the council would have to make and a choice that you would need to.
But Ed, in reality, we told people that we could possibly raise taxes four cents to issue seventeen and a half million dollars worth of debt, and we didn't.
And.
That was seventeen and a half million dollars, Rob, and we didn't, and we didn't increase taxes.
But, but the point is, is that these metro funds are just being available to us. It's like money we've been having sitting in the bank all the time. This money is just now coming available to us, and it's just a choice that we can make. We can use the sales tax money that we just got, that we weren't expecting to get, you know? I mean, there are other options other than that, but it just depends on how we want to do it.
Hotel motel tax.
Yeah.
Guys, I mean, and Jerry was here. Are y'all comfortable in this building? Because it cost us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go in and clean up the mess. We were left with this building with someone who underbid it and couldn't finish it, and we ended up with roof problems and other problems. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finish this building for the same reason that we went with the low bidder.
Had we made sure that a local, no, a local contractor got it.
Local contractor got it.
So you actually have had another discussion like this?
Uh, that was very short.
But it was another discussion?
Oh, no, it, it, no, it was right, that discussion was with him and the contractor.
But these problems that we've mentioned happen after completion. These are the things we found out.
And I'm going to bet that other cities have had these discussions done, because it's unfortunately that we get stuck with that, you know, we get stuck with that issue of that low bidder, and I, I wish the legislature would change it, but that's where it has to take place, and unfortunately, we get out lobbied by the contractors.
Ma'am, can I ask a related question, ma'am? How are we on repairing, uh, sidewalks that need immediate attention? Or that, that creates safety? I mean, are we on schedule?
We're on schedule to spend the entire allocated, uh, sidewalk money in this fiscal year. In fact, we'll probably end up spending it by April uh, on that with the amount of effort we've been putting to it, uh, recently on that. But we are on schedule, and historically, we've spent everything or even a little more than allocated. Uh, sometimes we've swapped money from streets accounts to cover emergency or needed repairs, uh, on an emergency basis on that. But we are on schedule to complete everything council has allocated.
And we'll continue to do that as we've committed to do.
Can we vote?
Yeah. There was a motion by you and a second by Councilman Emery. Do we, anybody need to repeat the, what the motion was? All right, been a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Very good, thank you. It's up to you, Buck. I know you will. All right. Ten A, and Caroline, you've got to read it in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese. I want you to read it in all four languages.
Pre-clared it's going to these.
If you printed it, you got to read it.
As a matter of fact, I think it's ridiculous to have those three languages, and in our, in our CD.
Can you read any of them?
Can you read it? Yes, I can read Spanish and, and Vietnamese, but I mean, how about Indians and all ethnic? I mean, other way, we got to list all the languages, you know? It's ridiculous.
Waste of money.
Unfortunately, this is law.
This is the Harris County mandate.
Right, I know, I know.
It is mandated by the state, right?
And it's, it wastes money and, I know.
Well, what if you had to do the whole agenda in all four lines? And Tercy, and, and what else you want to put in here, you know?
Have a ten page.
Huh?
Have a ten, twenty pages of agenda.
Yeah.
An ordinance of City of Missouri City, Texas, providing for a general election to be held on May eleventh, two, twenty thirteen, for the purpose of electing single-member district council members for districts A, B, C, and D, providing for the holding of a special election to be held on the same date for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Missouri City certain proposed amendments. qualified voters of the city of Missouri City certain proposed amendments to the existing city charter stating the subject matter of the proposed amendments to the city charter to be voted upon at said election, providing for a joint election on May eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, with other entities contracting with Fort Bend County for this joint election, providing for election precincts and polling places, providing for appeal, providing for severability, and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
Has anybody ever asked the question, what would happen if you passed this motion and it didn't pass? Or if you made the motion and it didn't pass, what would happen?
For the, for the general and for the special?
Yeah.
Um, that, that would be not to be recommended by your city.
Well, I'm saying out of curiosity, what would happen?
Very simply, the special, the special election would not be held. Uh, the, uh, general election-
Let's try it.
Did the state eventually step in and enforce the general election?
They would, we would certainly lose the opportunity to, um, avail ourselves of the recommendation from the Charter Review Commission for the special election, because that is not a mandate of the election, that's a discretion of the city.
Well, I know, I just thought it was an interesting question.
It was.
Based on the last vote.
That is correct. The general, the, the-
One of the four of us decided we don't do it.
The general election, um, would probably be taken away from, from the city and, and held, and, uh, to be sure that the voters were able to vote their council members, but the, the special election would be lost.
Well, I suppose we have to make the motion.
Huh?
I said, since, since we have to, I make the motion. We approve.
Is there a second?
Second. This is no brain.
Motion by Councilman Marshall, second by Mayor Pro Tim White. All those in favor? Motion carries. Ten.
Let's revisit this next year, too.
It's an interesting, interesting question. Eleven A.
Resolution of City Council, City of Missouri City, Texas, supporting the legislative agenda, the Texas Coalition for Affordable Power and the Regular Session of the Eighty Third Texas Legislature to enhance the competitive electric market and system reliability and to protect the traditional role of cities in the regulatory process.
Are, are we joining the coalition in this, the co-op that, that we're in? Are they, are they doing this as well? All the cities that are in that co-op?
I don't think all necessarily the cities are. We, of course, have a very active legislative agenda at this time, and we are keeping up with our various coalitions with the two mil recommendations and also the, the city's own program.
Make sure that we've got enough people.
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion, Councilman Marshall made the second. All those in favor, motion carries. B.
A resolution of City Council, City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of the grant application for the crime victim liaison project to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor through the Houston Galveston Area Council and containing other provisions related thereto.
Done, it's the same one we've done all along, is it not? Okay.
So move. Second.
Mayor Pro Tim White made the motion, Councilman Allen Cat made the second. Didn't you?
Don didn't.
Oh, I thought I heard you.
Smith, Smith, we sounded alike.
Okay. All those in favor, motion carries. C.
A resolution of City Council, City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of the grant application for the purchase of two mobile video surveillance trailers to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of Governors through the Houston Galveston Area Council and containing other provisions related thereto.
This is new, right? And it's the, those are the portable units that I see City Houston's got, got cameras on at Jim Park in parking lots and shopping centers and things like that, are they right?
It's, uh, it's like those, the, some of the portable ones you see in other cities accommodate, uh, people. These are raised cameras that go about thirty feet up in the air. Uh, it's good for crowd control, city events. I think we'll see a benefit out of it. You'll also be able to sort of gauge crowd size, which is something that we haven't